District Board Special Meeting scheduled to for a study of the fundamentals. I'm looking at the agenda right now and I don't think there's anything on here other than just to discuss the fundamentals. So do I need to do anything to open it officially?
Maybe do a call to order at the time.
It's 5:03 PM.
Maggie Ty.
Yes.
Can I make a, can I insert in there that if we put in the last 15 minutes to, there are some, so I guess we're putting the last 15 minute, if we can talk more about kind of COVID related stuff. As in kind of, I don't know, we want to talk about it now or I just want to have the last 15 minutes.
Sure. I mean, we're supposed to go to seven. And, uh, okay, sorry. Hang on, trying to get you guys back here. So, um, I actually had questions about that myself. Whether, whether, um, in addition to the work that we're doing right now on the fundamentals in general, whether we should be maybe thinking about some goals specifically for the 2020 to 2021 school year. Um, because the goals, the goals that we have here right now, some of these goals are things that like, can't be done this year or can't be tracked this year. And I don't know if this meeting time is appropriate for that discussion or whether that's a discussion that should happen in public at a separate meeting. Brian, yeah.
I would be concerned that we haven't noticed the public that we'd be having that discussion. We have noticed that we're specifically discussing tonight the fundamentals. And so I'm not sure legally we can stray from that specific topic.
Yeah. So that, that was my question.
Yeah. My suggestion and recommendation would be to schedule a special meeting, study session. So again, you know, probably no action to be taken to have the board receive information from staff regarding the fall reopening, planning progress. And we could schedule that for next week. I know some of you have schedules that are off and on, but we can do it in this environment. So even when you're not in the location, like President Lurie, you would still be able to call in. And at that time, staff would able to kind of update on all the work groups and discuss this, what you were just mentioning about specific priorities and our goals for the reopening for 2020, 21. So that would be my recommendation is to look at, and you could do that at the end of the meeting to say, when do we want to schedule another study session and agree to some dates?
Okay.
Yeah.
That seems, that seems reasonable. Okay. I'll, I'll make a note to save some time at the end. Um, does anybody have an actual kind of draft that they want to share? Or do we want to just kind of share thoughts about, you know, responses to kind of what we came up with last time? Brian, yeah.
There we go. You know, I, I took a kind of a crack at the, the first bucket, which would be educational environment. And I basically, what I ended up doing was just creating a sentence using the words that were already there and pretty much in the same order. So it kind of came across as, under educational environment, it said, MISD will create, colon, an environment where students experience the feeling of safety physically, psychologically, you know, those sorts of things. The second bullet, a supportive environment where high quality instruction strategies, differentiated instruction, and student centered inclusionary practices provide students access to the sports and opportunities necessary. And it kind of trailed off from there. And then the next bullet was learning environments must center student needs and voices to ensure that spaces are inclusive, diverse, equitable, and culturally competent in promoting mutual respect and acceptance of every child. So I had the, the main header was education environment. Then I broke that into three sections, which were safety, psychological safety, and centering how the student experiences the environment as opposed to how adults think they experience the environment, if that makes sense. If students are saying, I don't feel safe, I don't feel, I'm being bullied, I do whatever, that centers the student. And the second one would be about the supportive environment with high quality instruction, professional development, and how that's delivered. And then the third piece would specifically talk about cultural competency, equity, inclusivity, and mutual respect.
So, so you're taking things back out of bullet points now and kind of writing them into text, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. So it kind of becomes like three points under the big header. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
And then that way, because it kind of separated in my mind at least into three really important separate components under environment. And then depending on year to year or biannual, however we want to do that, we could place certain pieces of those ends in a monitoring one or a monitoring two. So we could say, you know, really right now, we want to focus on student safety for the next year. And so focus our metrics there, full metrics with qualitative and quantitative. Or we want to focus equity and educational justice. We say, we want full monitoring centered there. And we'll back off on the other two.
I like that.
Are we going from seven fundamentals to nine?
Three, kind of.
Yeah, three, but not everyone needs to have those three bullets. I just, this, this particular one broke down in kind of neatly into three sections.
Okay, fair enough.
Under skills and knowledge, we've got knowledge and skills, which would be two. And then on the last one, we had dispositions and mindset or identity or application.
So I feel like this is a lot easier to, to kind of understand as a layperson and as a parent in the community. It feels coherent to me.
I was similar like Brian. What I'm hearing Brian is that you took safe and supportive out as his own. And that's what I felt it needs to be out in his own as well. So how I see, and I think it's similar to what Brian is saying, is I see it like the environment that's in the classroom and also the campus climate, larger environment, right? Because when we talk about safety and when we talk about equity and all that, those are policies that we can do that's across the district versus like, even though personalized, you know, differentiated learning is maybe a policy that we do across district, but it is implemented within the classroom. So I do see, maybe we can just make it two bullet points of classroom related and larger, you know, district climate kind of issues. But we have to pull safety out as his own. I agree.
Do we want to bring up the Google Doc and edit in real time around this?
Do that.
Would you like to do that, Maggie Ty? Since you're kind of monitoring, would you like me to do that?
Um, no, I can, I can, I can do both, I think. Let me try. Okay. I have it up already.
As long as you have a big enough screen that you can kind of see the documents you're editing as well as everybody else.
Yeah. Hold on, I need to move you guys up. So you're, I'm putting you in a different.
Are you taking care of Maggie Ty being able to screen share?
Oh, yeah. Actually, wait, does it make more sense for someone else to screen share? No. I don't know.
There's some value in a third party doing it.
Yeah, somebody else do it.
Like Donna doing it, for example.
Yeah.
Because in the end, she, she's going to own this, so.
Right.
Let me, let me open it up.
Fair enough. Can, can I just put in a plug, by the way, for a book that I'm reading right now that, that seems really relevant to this, especially now that, that the way you're dividing up the, or the way we're dividing up the, the bigger goals into three smaller goals? I'm, I'm just started reading this book. It's called Measure What Matters. And it's a business book, but, um, but yeah, and it's a, it's about the like OKR process, which is like objectives and key results. And it's, it's very commonly used now in like tech companies. Google uses it and the Gates Foundation uses it and a bunch of places like that. But the idea is that you have like one, you know, one qualitative goal that is like clearly stated. And then you have, you know, three kind of measurable, quantitative measures that you, that you track for that goal within a set period of time. Like our goal is to get to, you know, X number within two years or within whatever period of time. Anyway, the book's quite interesting, so.
I apologize. I went into the wrong document. I need to go into the Google Doc. So just give me one second. Keep talking, Maggie.
Oh, I can talk all day.
I went into just the PDF.
And since you were talking about OKRs, there, there are technologies that allow everybody to lay out the OKRs and everybody gets goals based on them and that type of stuff, right? So it trickles down. It's.
Yeah, it trickles down.
Interesting.
My understanding of it is that, that you design the, the OKR so that anybody, anywhere in the organization can feel like they can contribute to the objective. Like, like it's not just like this thing far away that's sort of slowly making its way down through the organization. Like everybody who's part of the organization at every level should be able to look at it and go, oh, I could help with that. I could start doing this or I could do this differently. Okay, there we have it.
All right. I don't have anything in from Brian. I have some penciled notes that I made, but I don't know if you want to go back and capture some of that.
Or Brian, if you have something written, do you want to email it to Donna really quick? And she could just copy and paste it. You're muted.
Yeah, I was trying to, so I'll, it, does it work if I email it to you, Donna? Or put it in the chat box for copy and paste or?
Doing the chat would actually be easier.
Yeah. And it's not, not pretty. It's not fully finished. So there's some dangling stuff. Okay, it's not great, but.
While we're waiting, I have a question about student centered education. Do you think we're being redundant by saying that because these are student centered fundamentals already? And then we're having personalized learning environment? Do we need to say student centered education again?
I think it's worth saying because student centered has a different meaning to me than, than just saying personalized learning environment, because personalized learning environment could, could be like, you know, we're adjusting the reading level up or down, or, you know, we're, we're asking different things of you. Whereas like student centered is really looking at the student kind of holistically and like, what do they need? As, as I interpreted at least, you know?
But then all these fundamentals are student centered fundamentals. I think that's how it's been laid out, is how it's labeled, student centered fundamentals. And so then for me, it is assuming that that is embedded in all of these three buckets.
Do we, do we say that?
If you look at the actual, the way we did it, where we did the policy numbers, where we rewrote the values, vision, and mission. So the fundamentals then became operational expectation. And before they're all spelled out, it does label them as student centered fundamentals.
I don't, I don't personally feel really strongly one way or the other. David and Deborah?
I would, I would agree that student centered seems redundant to me. I, I didn't have the same takeaway as you did, Maggie Ty. That this, we've talked about, you know, a 360 view, the whole, the whole student, that type of thing. But student centered doesn't, didn't convey that to me. It did feel redundant versus doing a 360 view of the student.
Deborah, I don't know if you can, if you can talk or what your situation is right now.
Okay, now you can hear me, right?
Yeah.
Okay. But the question is, can I see the document and talk at the same time? Okay. Yes, I can. Okay. So I just want to make sure I'm clear that you're talking about the student centered that's like in the middle of the paragraph?
Yeah.
Cause twice, right? Or, well, okay, in the first sentence, I agree. I don't think, I think it's redundant there in terms of when we're talking about inclusionary practices. Cause inclusionary practices are student centered. So I agree there. And when, in the next sentence, if you look at the beginning, it says, learning environment. And I know Brian, I know you said that this is not edited. Learning environments must center student needs and voices. I, I just don't think that's phrased well. I don't, I don't think center is the right word. Prioritize? Or? I'm not, I'm not sure. I'm thinking prioritize right now, but. But anyways, I was, I'm just overall, since I don't want to jump in and out too much. I had done something actually sort of similar, but Brian's was way better than mine. So there's no way to, there's no reason for me to even get into it, but, but I really like this. And then just kind of a general with regards to safety, when we're talking student and community. I think this is much for more, you know, I, I don't want to forget that like, if a student is feeling safe and physically safe, yeah, this is what we're talking about. But, but under the social emotional learning, I mean, that's where their, you know, their, their being is feeling safe and secure. Does that make sense? So I don't, I, I don't know the need to really separate it out so between, between. I don't feel the need to separate it out. I think that we, I think it's pretty understood. And we're talking safe and supportive. Yeah, we want the students to feel that way too. I mean, if we know, we want the buildings to be safe or, you know, their environments to be safe. And we want them to feel safe too. I don't think we need to be specific in what, at what points we want them to feel safe. That's all.
Yeah. The part where I, I shifted into centering student voice and the feeling or the experience of safety comes from the work that I was just doing, starting at 8:00 AM this morning, which was around student, comprehensive student safety, which is the new legislative position coming out of the legislative committee. And in that, it was the differentiation between the student experience and adults telling them, no, no, you're fine, suck it up, or just deal with it, or whatever. What adults in the environment and our communities view as safe and, and all of that may be very different than what students are experiencing and expressing for what they need to have a safe environment. And so part of it is, is yes, having, you know, safe drinking water, safe facilities, all of those sort of aspects, buildings that are up to code and, and everything. Letter to drinking water was another position we were working on today. But, but then there's also the, the student experience itself. So if they're saying, no, no, I'm, it, it deals with bullying, it deals with harassment, it deals with all those things. And it also deals with things like SROs and, and those issues where adults in the space may say, no, you're, this is for your safety, but specific students culturally may be telling us, but I don't feel safe. And so it's, it's centering that voice in. I don't think we need to go too deep into it, but I think somehow addressing that there, there are two sides to that and ensuring that students have the voice at the table.
Is there, is there a way to do that in superintendent? I, I agree that I think that's really important, but is that something that could be talked about as your superintendent interpretation rather than in the actual fundamental language?
I guess for me, wherever it falls in, as a fundamental and ends would be monitoring how student voice is being leveraged within the district, which we're doing currently with our student representatives on the board and the student council being, coming more and more engaged. So it would be placing that within our specific fundamentals or ends saying, no, student voice has to be centered in all the decisions we're making. That also goes with our equity lens, because the students are the, the people that we're doing this for. And so their, their voice needs to be there in all the decisions that we make, right? In our, what does it say in all of our policies, programs, practices, and decisions?
So I, I'm not comfortable with prioritize replacing center because to me, if you say we must prioritize student needs and voices, then that's literally saying like, those are the top concern over, for example, teacher voices or, you know, budget constraints or any of the many other things that we talk about. Like I preferred centered to prioritize for, for just in terms of the wording there, but I'm, I'm open to other wording. It's, it's also partly just like, we, we need to hear student voices, you know, and kind of like pay attention to them. I don't, I don't have a good alternate phrasing there, but, but I, I prefer center over prioritize.
And I'm not sure if, as these are, as the fundamentals are woven in with the values, vision, and mission, remember that adamant place that the board landed on students are the priority and then listing out the, the values after that. So does that capture, Brian, what you're trying to? Just a reminder.
It could. Yeah. I, I don't want to go too deep. I, I think I've spoken enough to it and impassioned, I think, about the student voice. But it's also something we've been really focused on in debate today through WASDA, so.
Um, do we want to keep looking at the next sort of chunk of stuff? And then kind of we can circle back to that. I'm sorry, Donna, are you talking?
I am. Sorry. Can I just ask for clarification from Brian? Is this supposed to be?
No, it's just that one run on. Yeah. And, and they're not complete thoughts either. So MSI, MISD will create, colon, and then hit return. So it would be first bullet, an environment where student experience, where students experience safety. And then it would go on. I was trying to develop out of my head, physically, psychologically, emotionally, you know, and that would finish that sentence. And then a supportive environment becomes the next. So instead of and, it would be. A supportive environment where high quality instruction strategies, differentiations, differentiated instruction, inclusionary practices, provide students with access to supports, opportunities to explore. And it, I was in the middle of editing that when I had to jump to my other meeting. So that basically was building on those bullets there to explore experiences. Explore experiences in basic education and beyond, essentially was I was thinking. I, I think, explore foundational or foundational education or curriculum and beyond. So that was the, the risk component, right? Being able to take a risk and explore things outside of, you know, with, which fundamental, the building blocks of education that they need to have by standards and beyond. So however that looks. And then the last bullet would begin with, learning environments must prioritize student needs and voices to ensure that, yeah.
You can't, you can't really do that if you're, if you're starting, if the top of it is like MISD will create, colon, you can't then say, we'll create learning environments must. So it would be like, we'll create learning environments that.
Yeah.
Center slash prioritize student needs and voices.
Great. Yeah. My head, when working this thing, which was going through legislative positions and WASDA will support and initiate. So that whole framework was in there, which then goes on to the argument for. And yeah. Thank you.
I don't think that, I don't think voices fits there. I just think, cause we don't, like, if you, like, if you separate that out, I, I think we should leave it prioritized student needs to ensure spaces are inclusive. Cause voices, we don't need to ensure that voices are inclusive, diverse, equitable, and culturally competent. I mean, it's different than needs. Like there needs to be, needs need to be met. And part of that is hearing their voice. But I don't, I don't think it fits there.
We're prioritizing the needs and their voices.
I, I don't, I don't.
To ensure that these other things happen.
But that's part of ensuring that their needs are being met. I don't think we need to specifically spell that out. Cause it's, cause it's a very, very important part, but it's only one part of.
And my argument against would be that I think far too often adults decide what those needs are and they don't listen to the students. And so the needs aren't actually authentically being met in a meaningful way for students because adults are assuming what they need or, or what is important.
What about, um, what about something more like, I don't know what the right verbs are, but some, something about like student experiences, you know, like sort of like, like sort of honor student experiences or like, you know, honor student perspectives kind of thing, something, something like that.
And I was, I think, I think that, I think that some, like you've been saying, so much of the work that we've done is to increase student voice. And we need to make sure that remains a priority. And it is like with what Donna just said, I mean, that was the same thing I was going to add in is, is that's our number one value is students are the priority. And we can't have that without hearing their voice. I, I mean, we have those superintendents equity advisory, I'm sorry, the student, student advisory committee. We have our student representative on the board. They are now part of the student senate within the high school. I mean, there's so many places that we have student voice now, much more so than we used to have, that I think that that is part of showing the board's priority of, of listening to those voices to make sure that we're prioritizing student needs. I just think it's redundant.
And I also, the other piece is, this is supposed to be the board's direction to the superintendent. By law, the board directs the superintendent what to do. Now, we could write and say, the board says, you will survey the students and do what the students say. I don't know if that makes sense, but that, you know, effectively, that's what we're saying. I think, I think it's incumbent upon the board to understand what the student need is. And then tell the student, the superintendent what that is in a, in a one step removed fashion. Because the board needs to take into account that student safety, as well as the broader world safety of schools is important. For example, students may take, make assumptions that they get safety from a bunch of other things that the board really has to value and has to understand that it has a cost and in terms of money and in terms of superintendent attention to provide those safety needs that students just assume they're getting for free. So I think these really are board direction to the superintendent as opposed to the board saying, we're just delegating this to students to tell the superintendent what to do.
I, I'm going to say we actually should move on from this because I think there may be an opportunity to put something about hearing student voices in one of the, the next sections lower down. Um, is that okay, Brian? If we just like, put a pin in it and then go on? Because I actually think that, that it's part of, part of what we're hoping to, to produce in our graduate, you know, in our little astronaut person is, is someone whose voice, you know, who, who knows how to make their voice heard and has had an opportunity to have their voice heard, you know? So maybe we can work it in low, lower down.
Yeah. I, I'll just, I'm happy to move on, but I'm, I'm going to continue to plant the standard personally. That student voice needs to be centered and especially when we're discussing safety, their needs. It doesn't mean that they're dictating to the superintendent or anyone what is done, but through student surveys, through their voices, their counsel, everything, we need to hear from students themselves, how they're feeling and experiencing the environment before we can judge whether or not they're feeling safe and being approached and handled as a whole person. So, yeah, I'll, I'll debate that for as long as you want, but I'm happy to move on.
Okay, great.
And Maggie Ty, another pin that you can put in for me?
Yeah.
Back to that. So where the voice is, can you put student needs and experiences? And then we can talk about.
Yep. Okay. Yep. Okay. Two pins. Okay, so moving on to skills and knowledge. Brian, do you have another draft? Or did you, you ran out of steam there? Okay.
I ran out of time. Yeah, I've just been in nonstop meetings, but I I would essentially do the same thing as I would.
Yeah. So this works actually really well with that format, because I was really beating myself against, like, beating my head against the wall, trying to figure out how to take this whole paragraph and like work it in with these bullet points. So it actually works very well, I think, to to do it the same way. So it would be something like, do we want to start the same way, like, keep the same structure and say, like, M I S D will, you know, ensure that or whatever will will will, just M I C will maintain the highest learning standards, blah, blah, blah. By the way, I have a question. Is that, is the, that order that the the subjects are listed in, is that like state law or like, you know, like, is it imposed for some particular reason? Because it does seem like kind of an odd ordering, like, it's not, it's definitely not like kind of core subjects first, and it's not alphabetical, and it's not like smaller to larger, it's, you know, I'm just.
It is in fundamental two.
Yeah.
I believe it's done this way because the fine arts are the most important subject.
Oh, clearly. Followed closely by health and P E.
I mean, we added computer and educational technology, computer science and educational technology last, that's why it's.
Nice in my back.
Can you, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I think it was originally, if you look at it, alphabetical, like, they, I think they added fine to arts and then and health and then language arts and math and financial education was added. So like, if you look at the core, I I think it used to be alphabetical is my guess. And maybe, I mean, I know this is from a O S P R, O S P I and state board of that is, is kind of the, is, I don't know if it's straight from the WAC or what, but is it, if it isn't exactly worded this way, like, do we want to put it back in alphabetical order? But if it's worded that way in whatever we're mandated with, then then I think it should stay that way.
On the O S P I website, it's alpha, and you are correct, it just morphed over time. So it was alpha to begin with, and then as we added them. So but there isn't any priority given in the WAC or anything. It's just, so you can do whatever you want.
Do, 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 quick straw poll, do people feel that core subjects should go first or that it should be alphabetical or nobody cares?
I say alpha.
Yeah, alphabetical is fine with me. Okay, so we'll reorder that to be alphabetical. And do we need education?
First then, David.
That's right. Computer science. Um, but but um, one question is, do we need educational technology? Because we're not, that, we do need educational technology, because that's not something we're teaching.
It is. It's actually the newest of the state standards.
Okay.
And I think it is really important that we have it there because it is a learning standard. It doesn't say that this is core curriculum.
Okay.
And so you're kind of feeding into what one of the super revised superintendent priorities is going to focus on, which is technology that's embedded throughout our curriculum rather than this standalone piece. You know, we really, we we do that a lot, but in light of what's happening, especially now, we need to be able to move seamless seamlessly from technology tools to non-tech tools, so to speak, and it needs to be something that's embedded across the curriculum. So every teacher in every content area is able to support kids in using educational technology.
Totally got it. And it's separate then from computer science. So if somebody can just alphabetize.
If another staff member wants to jump in the document with me, take care of that while I'm listening to the other, because I will.
Or after the fact. Um, and 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 I'm wondering if we should retitle this section, knowledge and skills, if we're going to put the knowledge first. Is everybody okay with that?
It's a good idea. Yeah.
Deborah?
Am I gonna tie? I have something that I want to put in there.
Yeah.
Did you see it? I tried on the chat.
I cannot see the chat. I don't know where it's gone.
A sentence.
Yeah, I don't see.
Oh, now I see it. Uh, you have to click on the app rather than like, if you're just looking at the window.
Three times.
Now I see it.
Oh, there it is.
Okay, just want.
And we're going to track all three of those.
They're like the exact same thing. But basically, uh, it could be a separate, it's taking from some of the other things that we talk about, or it could be as part of this first one. And it really goes to the fact where how, it's not just the higher standard of learning is basically, is you're giving them content, right? But what we're hearing is that we're seeing how things are interdisciplinary, how they intersect, and, you know, how is it applicable? And so that's where the sentence is coming from. So either it could be a separate sentence or it is in, is continuing with this maintaining the highest learning standard.
Hang on, am I, am I on mute? No, I'm not. Okay. Deborah, are you trying to talk to us? No? Okay. Um, so I I think we want to, we want to do it as a separate item, because, because the things that are in that highest learning standard are the things that are, you know, like, come, that are like state imperatives, basically, like, that we're obligated to commit to. No? Sorry, Sidlin can't see everybody.
So I'm not saying that we're not, we're teaching it, but are we just teaching as content, knowledge, right? Are we teaching at a deeper layer of a deeper, deeper learning? And so the deeper learning is really how do you ultimately, how do the, all these content areas, how do they interact with each other, right? What lenses do we understand this knowledge by? And then how do we apply it? So it's a deeper kind of, yeah, deeper layer of teaching about. But the high standards is kind of, it doesn't give me anything. It's really hard.
I, I get that. High standards used to mean difficulty. We're teaching B C calculus. And now high standards also needs to include a much broader view of the world. And so the definition of high standards is is really changing on us in a, in a major way in in the new world. And we, we haven't accounted for that in the past.
Tam, do you want to read it?
Yeah, it's like I said, it could be in addition, so they're saying maintaining the high standards, learning standards in the areas of fine arts, blah, blah, blah. And then that are inclusive of all learning experiences with real world application and through the lenses, the lenses of intersectionality, equity and social justice. So now, so what this mean is, if we're teaching fine arts, okay, and are we teaching it through all experiences? So are we teaching, that's what I mean. And this is actually, it goes to when we talk about, people get really limited, actually, by when they talk about ethnic studies. It is beyond that. It is, are you looking at all the identities that are missing? What are the narratives that are not there? You know, who are we not including in it? Or are we, you know, but if we're just saying high standards, we are just, you know, using this book that we bought that might just show from one perspective, one gender, you know, one ethnic group, but this helps us to always be conscious of how, no matter what we teach, are we making sure that, you know, all contributors, experiences are in this content? And the intersectionality of this, and that's really, when you go to college, this is really the the move, the way forward is that they're not teaching content in isolation. They're teaching, you know, fine arts and technology, right? And that's what they say so beautiful about the iPhone is beautiful and functional. And so it's just adding more complex layer of learning and which is, like David said, is a new standard of high standards.
I I wonder if this belongs up above under the educational environment. No, I I I like the wording and the phrasing. And I I do wonder if this is, this is something that permeates everything we do. As, you know, using Brian's platform analogy, that's, that's kind of the basis is, you know, from stuff to communication to curriculum. We we do look at these, this triumvirate here.
So I I actually think it belongs in this section, because I think it's, it's more directly related to knowledge and skills. Because what I think what, as I'm understanding that, I'm I'm understanding it to to say that in, while we're doing this, you know, maintaining these high learning standards in across all these different subject areas, we are keeping this stuff in mind, like, we are, so so the the, to keep the parallel structure would be something like, you know, M I S D will maintain the highest learning standards, blah, blah, blah. And it would be something like, while, you know, I would say while remaining inclusive, except that we're, we're not necessarily that inclusive now, it's sort of more like, while, you know, um, while like aiming to, sorry, I'm just babbling, you don't have to type it. But something like, you know, while, you know, like, while committing to including a wide range of experiences with real world application and blah, blah, blah. Do you see what I'm saying? Like, it's like, these are the subjects.
We can just be a bit stronger and just state it. It doesn't mean that we have to accomplish it now. We we know that is a process. But we don't want to water it down right now, just kind of being, right?
Yeah, so.
All of these are aspirational, you know, comes.
Sure.
But isn't, for example, like, social justice, not just a curriculum focused item? And even, even similarly, equity is not just curriculum focused. It it seems like it, it falls on the discipline and hiring practices. I'd even say which students come into the school and do we welcome into the school as well, too? All, all that kind of makes sense, social, emotional learning. It's, it's a pretty, it's a very broad statement.
Yeah.
I really like it. I love it here as it stated in reference to our learning standards and our curriculum and, and it it's like the the meat and potatoes of the educational program, right? And it has to meet experiences and real world applications and the lens of intersectionality and equity and social justice. But these things of this line here, I think we should see some version of this in every one of our buckets, because in the equation, if this isn't something we're adding on to the plate, this is the plate. Like inclusive experience with real world application and through the lens of intersectionality, equity and social justice, this is the plate. Like, this is what should be holding up everything that we do through all buckets. And so it should appear in some form in everyone. I I like.
Wasn't that the intent of educational environment, as you envisioned it?
It's true. And it exists up there. I, like, kind of what I'm thinking here, or how it's reading out to me under knowledge and skill, is if we were to just start that whole section like we did the previous one, if we just started by saying that M I S D or the district will maintain the highest learning standards in colon. And then you can start the areas of fine arts, health and all, all those things, computer science and fine arts and. And then the next bullet down that are inclusive, all experiences, and then your third could be and builds skills or enhances skills and reaches skills in analytical thinking, critical thinking, that, see what I'm saying? So we're, the overarching is, under knowledge of skills, is that we're maintaining the highest standards or however that that plays out. And to me, when I think of highest standards, that fits beautifully into where we look at special education, where for too many areas, special education students may not be as challenged or held to a higher standard or expectation because of an implicit bias. And so this is saying, no, no. For every child, there are going to be high expectations and standards to meet. And so it's in, and I see the, the things that are laid out there, that's like our core 24 that we're building towards.
So I like the idea that it is the plate. And I I had printed out, just for reference, the, the, you know, rocket ship and astronaut drawing before this meeting, and I kind of see it as like, it's like a plate that travels with you as you go up the, it's like a, a big section of the middle of the plate, and it travels with you as you go up the levels, you know? Um, when I was going over this stuff, I had written some notes on the side and, and I had written for the knowledge section here, that that's like the what? It's like the what of what we're teaching. And then the skills section is sort of like the how. And then the section that follows, and I'm not saying that this needs to end up in the final, final document, but just like as a way of thinking about it. The section that follows about change agents, et cetera, is the why. It's like, why are we doing all of this? Because this is what we hope for our students when they exit, as they're exiting the system. So I guess that's me saying, I like the idea of having that commitment in some form in each of our, each of these sections. I might just, just want to tinker, quibble a little bit with with the exact wording, because we don't want to have the same thing three times.
I mean, it was interesting. So I didn't share out. I continued to work on my little rocket ship. Because even though we're not doing it anymore, I I was really getting a lot of joy out of designing that. So I continued to play with it. But based on information that was shared in our meeting, I took the plate here and changed it A, B, C, and then replicated it here in the circles of how they stack from an overhead view. So in there, it does become a plate with all three of these pieces stacking together. Does it really make? But, and then I did the same thing with my little nucleus over there, where we've got the student in the center and buckets A, B and C zipping around them as the electrons.
Nice. Very student centered.
Very visual. It's, it's nice.
So.
I I I think the other thing to remember is these need to be measurable. And how do we rate the superintendent on it? And to the degree, you know, we can be specific and targeted as opposed to repetitive, I think it helps.
I I I do think that that, I think that's a great reminder. And I do think that that we're going to want to have, like, if we do have something in every section, one of them is going to be the main area with like the most words. And then that would be the area where we would monitor it. And then the other areas can be just sort of more of a mention, like, in a context of the other stuff that we're talking about.
So just a reminder, when you look at, and I don't want to pull it up right now, but when you look at how the operational expectation is laid out in 01, it talks about the student centered fundamentals. So I'm wondering if, if there's a strong sense that these words in some way need to be the overarching. And I know right now it lists them with the seven fundamentals underneath, but maybe those become part of the, as we look at all of this, this is going to be the plate or the platform, that's not the best words either. But then here's still the three big buckets underneath. And then the criteria within those buckets that to David's point are the, the measurable metrics that then are what we're bringing forward and focusing on for you to measure how we're doing in those priorities. Because then with having that in the overarching statement, it just goes along with the values, vision and mission is, even in conversations, we're able as an organization, as an educational organization, that at any point in a meeting, when we're getting off kilter, there's always someone who brings us back to, let's, let's, let's remember that students are the priorities, like, how is this going to best impact our students? Yes, there's lots of other things to Maggie Ty's point that the board, you know, has to look at and determine, but I think you could do it as an overarching statement, which then pulls that in as something that we're bringing to you, staff is bringing to you, to remind ourselves and the rest of the organization, how is this becoming woven throughout the work that we're doing?
Brian, are you thinking something? You you look thoughtful. Brian, are you thinking something? You, you look thoughtful.
I'm contemplating. No, I, I, um, yeah. And it, it, it does condense it. And when I think of our monitoring reports that we get and because I, I keep looking at this thing. So how is this, how are we going to measure this? And remember, we're not grading the superintendent, but we're measuring annual growth and reasonable progress toward the standard, right? But so when I think of a monitoring report, we've got the, the statement that goes under that fundamental or that end or that goal. And then in it, there's the different little boxes, um, that we either find compliance altogether or we break them down. So all these things underneath are all those little boxes that go in. And then, so if we're monitoring educational environment, we'll have the main statement that falls under that, that kind of centers it. Um, and then all these bullet points that go underneath are all those extra little boxes that compliant, 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 and then overwhelmingly found compliant with all of them or mostly compliant with notes, right?
So if this is in, up at the top in kind of part of like an overarching statement, then it's not a little box that we can check or comment on, right?
For that, I, I, um, yeah, as those really important things, I think center from all three buckets and how they form that description. That is to bring clarity for anyone who's researching this for parents, faculty, students. Um, when they say, so what are these student focused fundamentals? And they bring up this document in our board docs. Then it says, you know, so our fundamentals, which, which one is that? It's, um, O E one.
Yeah.
O E one. How simple is that? That's, that was smart. Um, so it's, it says the student centered fundamentals will, um, whatever. I, I had a little thing that I played with, um, like students and families define success differently beyond K-12. Student focus, focus fundamentals defined the expectations and goals that establish the district's educational program. These encompass educational environment, skills and knowledge developed and disposition and, um, what our third bucket is. So that gives that very crisp definition of what these are. And then as we break into each one, now we've got all the little things that we monitor. Does that make sense?
That, that sounds great, but then that, that does not include this statement like that Tam has written, for example, right? Are you saying put it in there or don't put it in there?
I, I would say put it in there. I say sprinkle that statement everywhere. I want to see it everywhere. Um, but, uh, but yeah, I definitely place that in there as the description of that. And then it'll make sense of how it appears in all the different buckets as we go through. Because our, that, that statement should be in our occasion, uh, environment within the skills and knowledge that they're learning and developing. And eventually what we want to see them applying to the world and how they're impacting the real world, right?
Don't we, don't we think safety is everywhere as well? I mean, when kids go to sports or whatever they do, safety permeates everything we do at its most basic. I mean, I, 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 I keep coming back to, you know, educational environment really are those, those truisms that permeate everything we do. And, you know, if, if we're doing something that doesn't adhere to, you know, that, that priority number one, the center of the plate in some sense, you know, then there's, there's probably a problem going on. And I, and I think plate number one is probably, you know, the center of the plate is probably the most difficult one to measure and to track and to, and to follow because it does permeate everything. But I think this, this is the platform we, we talked about, you know, maybe a pyramid might be a better analogy than a rocket ship because this is what holds, it's, 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 we don't want to build this on quicksand. We want to build this on our, on a firm foundation. And I, you know, safety I'd put in there along with equity and social justice and intersectionality. Now we, we have to think about how we measure the superintendent on these across the broad spectrum of things the superintendent does. But I think from a, from an understanding viewpoint for parents and for the community and for children themselves, students themselves. You know, I, I, I think they should, they should come away knowing that this is the foundation of what we expect.
Um, so I actually think, um, so how I originally thought of this was, uh, mostly for the curriculum itself. But I appreciate that everybody is seeing how it permeates through all this. And I actually think that the third bullet point is what Brian wrote is similar, uh, to what I had. So for their very environment, maybe we just need to tweak this other third bullet point and add the third bullet point, the fourth bullet point together. It's going towards the same goal.
I see. Yeah. Letting inform us that practice student needs and experiences.
Yeah. So maybe you just add, um,
Yeah, I, I actually think that, that that that, the sentence that Brian had bullet point number three kind of says it for that section. Like I'd rather keep the, the text that Tam wrote lower down with the knowledge and skills in the knowledge and skill section.
Yeah. Well, because the bullet point number three is basically saying bullet point number four. Right? But you can maybe add, um, other, a couple more words to it.
Yeah. Sorry. Um, first equitable and cultural competency.
Is Deborah going to say something?
Okay. Sorry. No, I can't, I couldn't get off there. Um, I was thinking that, um, I'm sorry, I'm going back to my, uh, that I really like, I mean, I, I frankly agree with all of it. I, I like it under the educational environment, but I also like it kind of as a statement about our fundamentals. And I think that this is a great example of, um, how we come up with a like really important statement that is similar to this. And maybe we'll want to add a little bit more to it. And maybe this is a place that we can add student voice. But above all of them, so, so under student centered fundamentals, um, at the very top. And then that very first bullet point where we're basically making our statement of what is the overall, you know, very clear expectation. And with, I think it was Maggie Ty who said, you know, how do we monitor this? I mean, the direction is that, that every single thing that we're monitoring is done through this lens of inclusive experiences with real world application. Um, and, you know, wobble the rest of it. Um, so I, I think, I mean, I, I don't want to see us, when, when Brian says sprinkling throughout, I, I just want to make sure that we're really focused so that the, the things that we want measured are really measured. And this is so vitally important that it is a part of everything. That if we make, what I was thinking originally, and I like how this is going today, but originally I was thinking we make a statement like this for all of the three main topics. But maybe we make this one main statement and then with the three topics, uh, you know, the educational, uh, skills and knowledge and, and applications. And then, you know, and make it clear and, and we'll figure out a way to do that. Make it clear that it's the overarching expectation.
Thanks Deborah. Yeah. That makes a lot of sense. And just as I'm looking at it again, I'm looking at educational environment and I'm thinking that is the win. You know how before I was saying like the what and the how, sorry, not the when, the where, that is the where, not the when. Um, and so it's like, what kind of schools are we going to have? We're going to have schools like this. And I do think that this bullet point number three pretty much describes the kind of spaces we want to have, what kind of environment we want to have. So I would say for now, can we just leave it as like a, you know, a, as is sort of a placeholder in the top overarching section? And then let's go on and get down to skills and stuff because it's already six oh three. And, um, especially if we're going to take time at the end to schedule another meeting. Um, let's at least take a look at the, the bottom half of the document. So the, um, we had, we, we had switched it to knowledge and skills. And so we've got the knowledge and we are, um, can you go up a tiny bit, Donna or whoever's controlling the, yeah. Um, so if we're planning to leave in like the, that Tam's bullet point there underneath, um, underneath the highest learning standards, et cetera, then we need another sentence that Brian, did you have something about like, you know, the, the district is going to enhance student skills or teach student skills or something like that? Do you have something?
I, I don't have something specific, but yeah, I, in the chat box, I just, I, I threw in my little monkey statement, just as a, like a placeholder to start that conversation and threaded that with Tam's comment as well as kind of an overarching definition of what these are.
Great.
And then with the skills, I think I was just thinking that we, we just open potentially with the, um, the, the district will maintain the highest learning standards, colon, and first bullet, in the areas of fine arts, health, physical education, the core 24. And then maybe if we're calling out, um, using Tam's line there, um, curriculum and, uh, resources that are inclusive. I, I don't know if that, that serves a purpose.
You know, like via a curriculum and resources or sources or something, be, be it, yeah, something like that. Through, through curriculum and resources that are inclusive of all experiences with real world application and through, and, um, through the lenses of intersectionality, equity and social justice, something like that.
That is a, like a friendly amendment. If that helps to clarify Tam, what you were trying to, to say there or the direction you were trying to.
That works.
Yeah. That works for me. Okay. And then, and then bridging over to skills. Do we want to say like, um, we've, we still have MISD will blank or, or do we want to say again, like?
And build capacity for.
Right. Oh, so keeping it all. No, I think you need another subject again. I think we need to say like MISD students will, you know, learn skills like this. Or MISD will, you know, enhance students' abilities to, to, or will, I don't know.
Enhance is a good word because, um, it ties in specifically with a levy, which is our educational enhancement levy.
Basically will enhance student, student abilities in the areas of, just like up above. So it's almost like these are their own subject areas. I like that. In the areas of analytical thinking, critical thinking, um, question mark, ethical decision-making, cross-disciplinary thinking, problem. We have problem solving, but we thought about something like problem finding, um, information and technology literacy. So, um, I do think that we need something about cultural competency skills. I don't think we do any of our students a service to have them graduate not knowing how to navigate a, you know, diverse and changing world. On here is, I mean, would you say like cultural competency with peers? Like.
If we were more diverse, that would make sense.
Hypothetical peers.
Is there a better term for that? Um, as opposed to that, that's more like, um, cultural IQ or, um, it's cultural competence. I mean, it, it, that is the area. But we don't want to be redundant, right?
Right.
But it, it is necessary. They, they need to be able to step into a space in a room and, and check privilege and implicit bias and, and all those things and to be able to, um, experience different cultures and everything with a lens of appreciation and of learning, right?
Cultural awareness.
Maybe.
Because that's about being aware of your own culture in addition to appreciating others.
I mean, it's really not a skills per se. It's kind of like you give them content, but then it stops there. It doesn't really teach them how to make sense of that cultural awareness.
Yeah.
And, and there's a higher level concept of being able to work with people from different cultures and different backgrounds. You know, it's, it's not just accepting them, but, uh, actually being able to interact and, and collaborate and, and produce products with them.
I like the concept of cultural IQ too. In terms, because, because I, I agree with what you guys just said.
So these are skills that we are wanting our students to, um, we want them to be, you know, collaborative, you know, productive, uh, nice people that can interact with, uh, diverse, you know, people in different situation locally and nationally, right? So maybe a sentence would be, um, skills that allow students to, I don't formulate that, my thought. Erin has something she would like to say. She's texting me, but I think it would be better if she either just put it in the chat or spoke up.
Um, so I was going to suggest, um, cross culturally informed and responsive. Because the concept is not merely that you understand different cultures, but also that you're responsive and re, to those cultures. So you know how to navigate it and you're responsive. So I think it is more of a two-way concept. So I personally like cross culturally informed and responsive. So our job is to have.
Sorry, go ahead.
It's okay.
I didn't mean to cut you off. I just wanted to say that, that we can't use cultural intelligence or C Q because that is actually a concept. It turns out I just Googled it and it's a thing. And it's the ability to make sense of unfamiliar context and then blend in, which is not.
Not what we're going for.
Yeah.
Yeah. So as I said, um, I am in the sort of the healthcare space when for my, my past life, so to speak. One of the goals was to have staff who were cross culturally informed and responsive. Because not only you have to know about it, you need to be able to interact appropriately. There's not just knowledge growth. It's also self-growth in order to, um, respond. So that's just an idea.
And I can say that in some of my prior work in California, some of the credentialing work that we all had to do as educators, um, particularly, um, in cultural responsiveness was really described, just as Erin described it. So it was that understanding of how cultures respond differently in systems. And how do you react to that? Um, certainly as students, for us, it was, um, as educators to know how to, um, respond to our, all of our many different, um, cultures that our families represented.
I like that a lot. I feel like it's more clear that it's a skill and that it's something that, that kids can learn and practice. David, how do you feel about that?
That makes a lot of sense to me.
Or is it just ethnic cultures, but then do, are we, um, are we thinking about LGBTQ, you know?
Yeah. And there's, there's deaf culture, there's disability culture. There's a lot of different ways you could read that.
And so maybe that should be in our definition to be very clear about when we talk about culture, it is, um, including all these different cultures. I think that comes out in the interpretation, if that's your, um, question director doing, is it, does it become part of the, does the further detail then come into the interpretation? Yes, it would.
I like that a lot. Um, can we move on to problem solving or problem finding?
Actually, before we move on.
Yeah.
Um, the social emotional skills. I think we put it into problem solving, but, but I, I, I do wonder, are those, is that a skill and a knowledge that people have to have? Or is it something, you know, they, they just get to all the other learning we have. I, it's always, it, it, it's. Uh, it's always, it, it, it struck me as weird that we don't have social emotional skills, and development in this space.
Yeah, all of that, well, hmm, all of that is in, under dispositions in the next section.
I, I appreciate that, but I thought it was a taught skill.
Yeah.
I totally agree with that. And actually, that's been my same question is what I was loving about how we set this up is that we had our, you know, academic core subjects and our social emotional learning skills, um, in the same, that they weren't separated out in fundamentals anymore, that they're, that, that they're all, it's all knowledge. Yeah, we're teaching them, skills, but you need the foundation of knowledge in order to apply the skills.
Then would you say that all those, right now we have five items under dispositions. Would you be saying that we should move all of those into knowledge and skills? Because we could.
Yeah, I think so. I think they fit there too. And so it's really the hard and hard and soft skills, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd like to break it, I don't know, should we break it out or is it just all one giant laundry list?
I would find some way to weave it into, uh, at first a really long run-on sentence and then, then, and then parse it back and clarify from there.
Yeah.
Yeah. So is analytical and critical thinking, is it the same thing? Are there, uh, that big of a difference?
It's different because analytical thinking is like analyzing a problem and figuring out, you know, kind of how to, how to approach it and, and what the variables are, that kind of thing. And critical thinking is more like question, not just accepting everything as, as it's given to you. It's, it's more like, it's one, the next question, you know?
One aside the other. So that's why I'm saying as we're cutting all these words out, you know, and, um, problem solving is part of, you know, the process, right? The research process is the whole analytical. And so, those are kind of words that we can start.
Yeah.
Getting rid of.
Um.
I would, I would be tempted to, and not because it changes the priority at all, but take cross-culturally informed and responsive and move that, towards the end of the list because, um, it, it's the nice wrap-up that all these skills that they're building, these soft skills, and ethics and, and all these things, and problem solving and self-awareness is, all fitting into, that is culturally informed and responsive.
Yeah, I think we can get rid of, I, I think that's great. I think that's better. And I think we can get rid of problem solving because we actually have it in the next section under the kind of like, um, mindsets or identities or whatever. One of them is problem finders. What do we think?
I think we have to differentiate between learned or taught skills, skills that students learn, and that we actively have curriculum, and processes and procedures that help students learn how to do this, versus things that are expectations in some sense. Through all the work we've done, we expect our students to evolve into this type of person.
I'm comfortable taking it out. I think that problem solving, the way that we have it here, is really covered in analytical and critical thinking with the definitions that Maggie Ty used. I totally agree with that. But I, but I also would like to see us keep problem finders in applications because you can only solve a problem that you can find. So, so I agree with that, with, with that caveat, if that makes sense.
Yeah. Okay, um. Can we take a look at the next section and then we can come back and see if we want to write through?
I just wanted to get clarification on, I'll write with the, um, Director DeSousa was talking about, those that are taught, those that are expectations. And so those were the, I just stuck those in there. I don't know if that's.
We, we do want to say expectations for growth, kind of, or something like, because we're, we're not expecting them to like bam, instantly have, you know, any of these qualities. Expectations a little bit sounds like we expect them to, to have them from the get-go.
They are.
Oh, no, 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 never mind, never mind. I, I forgot. It says will enhance student abilities in the areas of, except we call those dispositions. Do we want to change that to dispositions instead of expectations? I really like dispositions.
But we are, we, we do have a very, um, developed SEL curriculum. So we are teaching all of our students this, right?
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's right. That's, that's kind of what centers around me too, that it's SEL is missing from this section, is, is odd. And maybe it should be up in the beginning where we talk about computer science, mathematics, and that type of thing. We should, we should have social emotional curriculum listed there.
I would support that if it, if it doesn't. Yeah, no, I would support that.
So I think actually we can have two sentences. One is for the analytical, you know, um, kind of the heart, you know, those kind of rainy skills, right? And the other one is like the hard kind of skill, but there's, but there's still skills. Yeah. And then if, uh, do we need to, the word social emotional intelligence is that, um, I feel like those self-awareness, empathy, social emotion, they're all kind of the same thing. So how do we either condense it or, which word do we like?
I, I'm okay with taking out social emotional intelligence, especially if we're going to mention SEL up above. David?
Yeah, I'd agree.
Take it out.
Brian?
Take it out.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay, great.
Because we're calling it out in the header.
Yeah.
I, I would also say, um, while that's happening, um, one thing that I see missing under skills is creativity.
Hmm, yes, I do agree, yeah.
Because that, that feeds into the problem solving and, and so many other areas.
Yeah, I'm fine with adding that, especially because we actually took it out somewhere else, that it used to be. Oh, no, we, we still have creative individuals. Then maybe we can take out the creative individuals. I'm fine with that. That's an important skill.
Can I get clarification on problem solving? I think I missed something there.
Out.
Out.
Yeah.
David, I know you had some strong.
Yeah, that was, that was my, it's, 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 uh, having been in problem solving mode for a, a, a lot of different things. It's, it's a, it's, it's a very challenging place to put people into and to, you know, a, a school board is a problem solving board. Uh, the student, uh, advisory committee is another problem solving board. So it, it's an opportunity for, for kids to be brought together to work together to solve a problem. Now there's collaborative problem solving, however you want to call it. But I think, uh, I think it's a, it's a real, it's a real challenge. DECA is about problem solving. Uh, destination imagination is about problem solving. Robotics is about problem solving. Uh, you, you, you name, uh, project-based learning is about project, is about problem solving. And we've, we've got a great deal of curriculum in the space.
And some educators actually, um, refer to it as problem-based learning. So I actually am more drawn to the problem solving or the problem-based learning, versus the, the real world application. I'm, I know you had taken that out before and now it's back in, but the, the real world piece, I don't know, it's.
It's, it's harder to hold the school accountable for.
I mean, real applications here.
I would say that to, to defend David's, um, point, if I understand what I'm hearing and I agree, um, problem solving is a skill that we're teaching and cultivating. Um, you learn to problem solve by doing puzzles and, and working things out and teasing them out and, and through that practice of building the capacity. And if we've done that well in this section, then when we get to impact in the world, then they've become problem finders. And that's different, right? So problem, problem solving is a skill that we're building capacity in. And if, that combined with other skills, then they become problem finders. Because they're, they now know how to spot problems and work them out. So it's like, practicing stuff at home and then going to a puzzle break room where you've got 16 minutes to get out. Now you're a problem finder. A puzzle finder, right?
I'm, I'm okay with that. I, I think of it in terms of, you mentioned DI. I think of it in terms of, um, you know, they, they do these contests where like you have to drop an egg and you build a structure out of toothpicks to, to cushion the egg in, in its fall. And, and I think, there's so many different ways you can do that as you get older and more sophisticated with your building techniques, right? That's a problem solving, exercise. But then when you get, when you get towards the end of your, your high school education, you can start asking the question like, why are we dropping an egg? Is there something else we should be doing? Like what's worth building with toothpicks, you know, kind of start asking questions. I'm fine with that. Okay. So we're keeping problem solving.
Do you want to maintain, um, information and technology literacy? That is from, um, fundamental.
Yes. Want to keep it.
Five, which is one of the ones that we were, we're questioning in, in my notes previously. I'd had it crossed out. It landed back here. So I'm just clarifying.
But I would move it down to the bottom of that section because I think creativity belongs with problem solving. They should be neighbors. And that, that information and technology literacy, because it, it really runs through all the subjects and through, kids' entire school experience, especially right now, um, it, it sits better at the end. Um. Okay, so, we have the dispositions. We've, we've, we've winnowed them down a little bit. Um, let's look at the last section, which is change. We have a lot going on here. We have change agents impacting the world, which is also the Y section. We have dispositions and identities, but not dispositions anymore. So you can take out the dispositions part there. And you can take out those first five bullet points because they've moved up a section. Okay, now there's less going on. Um, so what are the students doing with what they're learning in category two? What are the students involved in? Those were some of the questions that were asked just at the tail end of the last meeting. So what do we want to call this section? Because, because everything else is nice and tidy, you know, educational environment, knowledge and skills. Change agents impacting the world is a little bit, broad, like it's, I, it's a little ambitious as a, as a section title in my mind. Because it really, we're, we're asking like, you know, what are the really literally student-centered goals? What are the goals for our students? You know, what is our hope for our, little astronaut there?
Do you think, um, if you went with like identities, applications and world impacts? Or just, identity, application, impact?
Well, I like impact just by itself. Identities, applications, impact.
Or, or you could just go by world impacts as the title of the section too.
Yeah, although not everybody's, is, I mean, Tam talked before at last, at the last meeting about, about kids having to be a good message that, that kids are agents of change, even if the change is just that they can, you know, get out of bed when they're depressed and go to school, right? I, I hate to set the bar so high.
World impact.
World impact.
That's, that's fair.
You also can have a world impact in a bad way. As I think we're all seeing.
Well, it's interesting that you say that too, is when we look at identity, um, there's some work that suggests that when we focus too much on individual identity and individual voice and making your mark and individual mark in the world, um, the direction of that can become very problematic and the energy and emotion behind it. Whereas when it's connected into your community, when you're connected with your peers and your community and see yourself, now the impacts hopefully are going to be, more on the positive side. I think in a lot of areas where we see people really cultivating individual, identity and, and your individual voice and your mark in the world, sometimes that has some pretty disastrous results. And that can be, um, in aggression or violence that's either turned inward or outward.
Could we call it individual and community identity? Identities, I don't know, something like that. Or could we call it the civic-minded graduate? That's a phrase from somebody else's program.
That's copyrighted, right? Yeah, that's from Indiana University Purdue.
If you cite it, you'd be fine.
Yeah.
We don't have to pay a royalty for it.
I didn't have to when I used it.
Because eight, like change, change agents is, that's kind of partly what we're getting at.
I'm still rooting for agents of change with Kate's. The title could very well also just be change agents. Um, and then we talk about identity and application impacting in the description of, what's here as we begin that, long run-on sentence that will be paired back.
Uh, can we go down the list of bullet points really quickly and just see if there are any that we can take out because of having added them up above or something? So we can know how long that run-on sentence is going to be. Creative individuals, innovators, leaders, collaborative, communicators, problem finders, globally aware, showing an understanding of real world problems, issues, concerns, commonalities, differences and interdependence. That, that, that's kind of your, you know, equity and social justice lens mentioned there, although you might want to add to it. Um, academic risk takers and definitely ending with lifelong learners.
And we had. Fundamental six, right? That was there before.
I think so.
Cultivating global awareness and understanding of real world problems.
Showing, yeah, that all, this one here, this is directly out of fundamental sticks.
Yeah. And everything else, I think we can.
Is, sorry, Tam, this is for lifelong learners, tags to the values, vision and mission statement. And the collaborative.
It's from the values, vision and mission statement.
The collaborative and communicators is from fundamental, five, as is leaders. And innovators.
And then the mission statement also has thinking critically, solving problems creatively and working collaboratively. So it kind of touches on a lot of those same points. Now I'm looking at this.
Is this your aspirational pieces where we want students to be? And, how do you measure it?
Right. So here I really, uh, this could be a very powerful bucket in where I see everything ties together. The students are taking everything that we're, we've taught them, right? And now they're able to understand how they, their identity, is connected to each other, right? To see how we're interdependent, how we're connected, not just to individual, but to this environment, to the earth, and to all the social problems out there. So that's why I kind of want for, uh, somehow it's worded in here. Is that just like there, when, when, I guess it's like connect when students are connected or when people are connected, right? That is when they are happy and healthy and are able to make impact. So, yeah, I don't know how we can, um, but just, I would like something about connected to, to themselves, right? Or grounded to themselves, to others and then to our earth. That would be important.
I don't want to be a nag, but just a reminder about the metrics and how do you measure that? Because that is what the, the fundamentals are.
And these, and these could be, um, like a lot of our service learning, a lot of our opportunities. I think these are the opportunities that we're giving our students to do, like our entrepreneurship, right? That's exactly what they're doing. They're problem finders. They're, uh, seeing their connection to, uh, listening to them to see, identify the problems out there and how are they able to service the community? And they have so much different, uh, so many different projects that they were involved in. And so there was connection to sustainability in an environment. Um, so I think these are our, um, the extra step that we're able to give our students, uh, as being Mercer Island is that we're giving them these, all this opportunity to apply, um, their learning.
So for me, that fits a lot better with civic-minded graduate as a title. And I know I'm, I'm a minority voice here in not, not being a huge fan of change agents. But all of those things that you're describing to me are. But all of those things that you're describing to me are more measurable. If you look at, at it in terms of like sort of civic mindedness, it's like, you know, what percentage of eligible students have registered to vote, you know? Like how involved have students been in like the, you know, like, like what, what, you know, you know, after school, okay, if there is an after school, what after school programs are the kids involved in? You know, like, like, um, you know, how much are they reaching out to the local community, you know, et cetera, et cetera? Like all of those things again, get back to this question of being basically civic minded.
It's a lot more qualitative over quantitative, but I could see in our EES surveys, if we continue to do those, that, you know, we're looking at, at who is signing up for those classes and extra things and, and seeing how we can encourage students to be more engaged in those extra programs and stuff. But then also as they reflect of how they see themselves, do they see themselves as these target things, you know, in surveys? I would also say to maybe remove one bullet point. I would be interested in maybe combining creative individuals, drop individuals and move innovators up. So they become creative innovators. I'm, I'm watching the documentary series on the Disney Imagineers.
It's so good.
It's so good, yeah. But that's when I think of creative innovators. I mean, that's a great example of where you've got people who are thinking outside the box, who see something they want to fabricate and create. And there's, it doesn't exist. And so they say, well, okay, I have the skills and the ability, I'll create that. I'll fabricate that. I'll build that story. I think of a, a local preschool teacher who was reading a series of novels that she loved. And the, the novel series dropped off and she was waiting for the next in the series to come. And she was waiting, waiting, finding a board. So she started writing her own and now she's now multiple books into her home, her own series of novels. That's create creative innovation, right?
So then is problem finders, you know, I really love the problem solving in the space above. But then here then problem finders, are they part of the innovators? Because you have to kind of find the problem to see what the gaps are.
I would pair that, yeah.
I would put it first, actually, problem finders and then creative innovators. You find the problem first.
But then should we put together? I mean, or.
Oh, like, no, I think they're separate.
I, I see the beginnings of a great run on sentence.
You've got your tree shakers and your jelly makers, right? Oh, not everyone was, was at the meeting yesterday at the, one of, one of the future learning committee meeting. I mentioned that I had just come off of a, of a Zoom seminar where someone was, was talking about the civil rights movement and that they're, they're in the 50s and 60s and that, that there were tree shakers and jelly makers. And tree shakers are the people who kind of shake things up and, and make dramatic change and get attention. And then the jelly makers are the people who kind of come along afterwards and kind of contemplatively pick up the fruit that has come down from the tree shakers and sort of like mull it over and kind of figure out what's, what's going to happen next. So.
Like a super standard interpretation to me.
That's right. So that's the problem finders are your tree shakers and, you know, it doesn't always have to be the same people, which is what I'm saying, like it doesn't have to be on the same one. I like that problem finders, creative innovators. We have, maybe we should actually put like, you know, collaborative communicators. Is that getting too, too many words together?
Or you could say collaborative leaders and communicators.
Oh, yeah. Collaborative leaders.
Built into that servant leader model.
Yes. I like that.
I don't think we need to have communicators here. I mean, everything we, I mean, that should be a skill, but then are we looking for communicators?
I would say we are. I think something that I'm sorely missing right now in a lot of our media, national media are science communicators who are able to tell through a journalistic lens, the story of science and what's happening in an impactful way that makes people stand up and take notice. I think if we had really great science communicators on the beat right now, there'd probably be less confusion about safety protocols and all of that, not to get critical.
And you need someone to communicate these creative innovations that you've developed.
And so I think for me, communicators, as that comes out, that's through journalism, that's the radio station, that's, you know, people who are writing novels as well as people who are, who are doing the research and, and sharing that research out in papers and.
To Director Dinn's point, you don't have communication as a skill in the skill area.
Yeah, because I feel like that's embedded in if you are a good leader, if you're an innovator. It's all, we don't want to start to identify all professional roles and responsibilities.
But I do think it's a skill that we don't want to disregard because in so much of the work in any kind of pedagogical work that we're, we're doing with teachers, it really is how are you having students who learned something, express that and communicate it out and allowing that diversity in, in the way that they're doing that. So I, I do strongly feel that communication in some way, shape or form should be here. I'm just, I mean, get it out completely, I guess.
Yeah, let's put it under skills. Are you okay with that, Tam?
Well, that's why I think you'd probably be a better fit that we're teaching, right? That.
I put it above information and technology literacy, actually. I still kind of like that one last, I put it after creativity. Is that okay with you, Deborah and David?
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense. And I, I'm, I'm actually thinking we should delete information and technology literacy. In, in some sense, it's like using a chalkboard or using pencil and paper, you know, especially for our kids today. It should, it should put, it's almost implicit that it should permeate everything.
That's too bad because it's very measurable.
Read the educational technology learning standards. That is a big part of those standards to David's point of, that it should be embedded in everything. And that is hangover language from fundamental five.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, we've got it covered then. Okay, we, just to keep everyone aware of the time, it's 6:41. So let's just spend like five more minutes, 10 more minutes on the bottom section so we can then.
I did put in a suggestion from Aaron Battersby of title civically engaged and socially responsible graduates. So you've got several titles here to contemplate.
Like a Victorian novel with like a chapter with like 10 titles on top of each other. I really like that civically engaged and socially responsible graduates. I feel like that covers a lot of, of what we were trying to get at.
It covers a lot of territory, that's for sure.
Do you still want all of this as it was is awesome?
I, I feel like it's a little bit too much detail to, to list out problems, issues and concerns. Do you think we could boil that down to just say showing an understanding of real world? You know? We've already got prob, we've already got problems though. We've got problem solvers and problem finders. So real world, you know, issues, commonalities, differences and interdependencies. That should be a S at the end of interdependence, I think.
You think that globally aware encompasses it?
It does, yeah.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'd, I'd agree with that, but globally aware is much more holistic and abstract.
All of that is what is currently in fundamental six. Cultivate global awareness and understanding of real world problems, issues, concerns, commonalities, differences and interdependence. If you feel like that globally aware. And then again, there is that interpretation that is defining that in greater detail.
Yeah, and absolutely, I would say, and the only argument I would find to, to keep any of it is that the interpretation of course is not the statement of the board. It's the interpretation of the superintendent. Yeah, which.
But it has to be approved by the board.
It has to be approved by the board. But there's less negotiation around that. But yeah, no, I think we could absolutely cut it. And I think it could be represented within definitions and expansion within the interpretation. But to the, the notion of understanding if people read the document and look at globally aware on its own, will that make sense to them?
Does that specifically, do you think, when I think globally aware, I think of, you know, world news, like conflicts between nations, and I think of global warming. I don't necessarily think of, of problems within the US like systemic racism or, you know, poverty within the US, those kinds of issues.
Or even within our own community, right?
Right. So like globally and locally aware, like globally and like aware of global and local.
But it's not fitting with how we are making these all like problem finders, you know, creative innovators, leaders. And now we're just global aware, right? Are we calling like global citizens?
Yeah.
Follow through with that.
Yeah. Oh, that's true. Every other thing globally aware citizens, yeah. That's a better parallel. Are we taking communicators out though? Because I thought we, we added communication up above. Yeah, we added communication to skills, so we can take communicators out.
I would fight to keep communicators in, but I may be alone on that.
So I'm fine leaving it in. I, I like as a former journalist, I'm a little biased there. But, but I also think that, that, that it's such a powerful skill to have, you know?
How about global communicators? And I'm not trying to be facetious in that. I just mean that, um, I, I agree with the very broad definition of globally aware. And, and I think that, that one part, like with the communicator, it's not just talking. It's, it's listening and being aware of the world around you in order to, you know what I mean? Like I think it's all really related. So. I, I, I mean, I would do global communicators, not globally aware communicators, but, but it can sit there, it can sit.
I keep the aware in just because if you say global communicators, that sounds like, okay, you're, you're encouraging kids to go on YouTube and tell the whole world about whatever it is, you know what I mean? Like, like.
Well, that's.
Like you to the world. Whereas globally aware means like, I'm sensitive about global issues. I'm not going to like post this thing that's, you know, inflammatory against like this other country, for example, you know? How not to communicate as well as how to communicate. I'm okay with globally aware communicators. That, that's nice and succinct. David and Tam? Any thoughts?
When I see the global aware communicators, it goes back to, it's really that, still the connection to me. It's like that you're, you're making a connection to something larger than beyond yourself, right? And if they're. Yeah, but globally aware communicator doesn't really mean anything to me right now. I don't know how, what is that? But as a, as a whole, I just feel. Yeah, yeah, I don't know. I, part of me still want this part somewhere in there to. In the end, all of these are really great and what we should aspire to. But we should all also make it as important for someone just to, you know, even if they're not any of these things, how are they still a good person? Right? Because we have to think of our, those with limitations and challenges. And so just like a story, so I was named my, my, my saint name is Saint Teresa. And I hated Saint Teresa, the story behind her because she was a saint of little things. So she didn't do anything magical. She just swept the floor really well and she cooked really well. And I just like hated that and I thought my mom used that just to make me this perfect, you know? But she did whatever she did, she just did it really well. And I didn't appreciate that until now, you know, because we don't have to do these whole big, you know, all these big awesome things. But if we just live well with what we have, then I think we are successful. And so how do our students, are they first are okay with that? And yes, in their area of influence, they can be problem finders and things like that. But it just to start with, how, how, how are they just a good person? I don't know. I don't know.
What about like kind helpers or something like that, you know? Like, because we certainly hope that there'll be that as well. I think that.
It also comes back to global awareness. You don't, you don't have to be, you, you don't have to be active. You, you, you can still be passive and be a good citizen in terms of how you vote or what you do or things you do for yourself.
I think that is actually covered under, if we go with a title like civically engaged and socially responsible graduates. I mean, that's kind of the definition, right? I mean, we, we see that as being a good person. And, and I think, I, I think you make a really good point, but I think it's there. And I, I, I don't want to say, just like putting in something, I don't want to say that simplistic because it's the foundation, but that's why the title is kind of the foundation. It kind of doesn't fit with the other aspirations.
So this last section is going to be really short compared to the other sections, which may be totally fine. I'm just saying it's going to be like a sentence, basically. And the other, the other sections will be more, and, and that's okay because this is the why, right? Because the other sections are like the where and the what and the how. And then this is the why. So the why is to produce civically engaged and socially responsible graduates.
But are we making sure that all of our students are in here? You know, because we have a diversity of learners and abilities and needs, right? And if we're able to help them and give them the education that they can be all this, I think is great. But if we're putting these things in, we're making it so that they don't see themselves in here. And then they, they're not successful, then because if they don't fit into one of these categories and they're not successful, then it's, you know, we're unintentionally harming them.
Well, so, I mean, there's different ways of being socially responsible, right? I mean, like picking up after yourself when you're at the beach is socially responsible, right? Like there's, there's different levels of all of these things. Sorry, go ahead, Brian.
Well, no, I was just gonna say, I, I, you're, you're really striking something for me, Tam. I'm, I'm really responding to what you're saying here and how I'm hearing it is. How are our students rooted in? In their own confidence and who they are, of appreciating their cultural capital and what they bring to the table just by being them. We've got all these skills that have built around and they cultivate all these things. But at the end of the day, if you're, it, it comes to the back to that question we asked early on. What is success? How do we define success? And we have so many people in our, our communities right now who are always reaching for some goal of excellence or check this box, reach that, reach that, because they're never enough, they're never enough. We have this whole complex where people feel like they're a fraud and they're going to be exposed that they, they're, you know, they don't belong there because they have self doubt. So where in this do we capture? I, I don't like the word good because I think there are a lot of implications that are unintended with that word. But how do they feel rooted in themselves with competence and belief in themselves that they themselves are enough? And through that place and that confidence, they use these skills to do all these other extraordinary things. But if, if they're not sure of themselves, if they don't have that self-confidence, if they don't have that rooted core, then there, it, there's that anxiety and depression and, and it, so I, I don't know how to, I don't know how to succinctly say that, but yeah, I, I agree. That's missing. That's how I hear what you're saying, Tam, and, and it's missing.
Yes, and, and also on another side is also when we put this, this is, we don't recognize that the systemic challenges to a lot of our communities. to a lot of our communities. And don't get me wrong, I love all this. And this is what I, you know, tell my kids every, this is why I want you to be A, B and C, right? You can ask them, they'll memorize, they'll give you a list. But if we're thinking of the whole spectrum of all who we serve. And that, I really love what you said, Brian, it's like, how are they enough? So maybe like connected and confident, right? Are they just enough by, and then for us to see that is awesome, right? That if you can be like this, but a lot of what we have in here is also very tied to really systemic opportunities, whether they're even are given an opportunity to be a leader or not.
Right, so, so here's a question. Are we maybe thinking about this the wrong way? Because if, if the, the why, if this is the, if this is really the why of this whole document, right? Isn't it really about the schools providing kids with the opportunity to, as you say, become connected and confident? To maximize their own personal potential, for example, right? Like, that's something that is measurable, like on a district basis, you know? Like, like we can say, oh, are kids getting an opportunity to maximize their potential? Look, if they have potential to go to college, are they getting a chance to apply to college? If they have potential to, you know, work in a job, like are we helping to get them there? You know, that kind of thing, like versus saying like, this is our perfect Mercer Island graduate. Which we can't really, you know, measure how the administration is doing on that exactly. And maybe this belongs somewhere else. Maybe this belongs in some other thing that we do at some other point.
Can I just, I know Deborah's got her hand up, but I just want to remind Vision Values Mission talks about whole child. And as, as Tam was talking, that was really resonating with me as well. But then as I was thinking, it was like, that's the whole child concept that we're making sure that our kids are emotionally well, mentally well, feeling connected and that when they graduate, they're confident in who they are, whoever that is.
That's, sorry, Deborah, and then you have only five minutes till seven o'clock, just.
I just wanted to say that I hear what you guys are saying, but I don't. To me, I, I think it's all in, in terms of how it's defined. So, so I think as long as the superintendent interpretation is, is written effectively, which I'm confident it will be. I, I think all of these things, nowhere, nowhere are we saying only the best, you know, brightest kids can be creative innovators. I mean, like, like similar to what Maggie Ty said, like, we, we do things in the, in the, we, we expect, I mean, it's very individualized. We, you know, for, for globally aware communicators, we might have a student who is deaf and learns ASL or a student who is dyslexic and takes ASL instead of a different world language so that they can be, add to our global communication. It's also, I mean, I, I don't think we're saying in any, I, I think you're putting judgment on these terms rather than saying, well, we want these for all of our students. From, from the student who's trying to learn how to brush their teeth in the morning to the, to the student who's, you know, creating a vaccine for COVID. I think this applies to everyone. And so, and I think that that can be made really clear in the superintendent interpretation that, that we have these expectations for every student. And we don't judge, you know, what they're, what, what the, how they're applying. We, we want them to be applying in the best way that they can.
So I, I hear what you're saying. And I actually think that there's kind of common ground we can find here. If we rewrite this, not as like identities that sound like job titles, basically. But if we rewrite it to say, you know, we, we hope that, you know, like it's our hope that Mercer Island, that, that, you know, by the time kids are finished in the Mercer Island school system, that they will feel, you know, connected to themselves, connected to others. Like that they will, you know, they will, they will be able to find problems. They'll be able to, to think creatively. And that can be like, I can't tie my shoes. I'm going to think creatively about what to do about my shoes, right? You know, like, like think creatively, you know, like step up and lead others, you know, like blah, blah, blah. Like if we describe it as active things that kids can do, rather than sort of roles that kids may feel like they have to fit into. It, I think it might read more palatably kind of to everybody. Does that make sense? I can, I can try and type something up right now, but I want to be respectful of people's time. And it is six fifty-eight and we wanted to schedule another meeting. How about if we work on scheduling the meeting? Donna, can you talk to people about scheduling the meeting and I'll type something and put it in the notes in the chat? Yeah?
Maggie Ty, I threw maybe just a phrase in there.
Yeah.
The, to build from, if, if people like it. And it's just who recognize and celebrate their personal value and contribution in the world. So it's in the chat box.
Great, okay. So let me, let me type something.
You're muted, Donna.
My mask is everywhere right now between the two screens. I'm going to stop screen sharing as obviously I've done to talk a little bit about calendaring. And as I said at the beginning, having a study session around the planning progress that's being made for, and the different. Information that comes daily, it seems, as we plan to reopen schools. I think it would be really critical to give the board an update as well as be communicating that out. We're looking to do some. Fireside chat kind of. Webinars, Zoom webinars that with staff and, and parents to help get information out on that. But we could do, we could do a two-fold study session, one where we could give the board an update on, on progress and talk about board priorities for the reopen plan. And also then item two could be this fundamental work. You could do it for a longer session or do it for. Two in a row, like do one, take a break and then come back and do the other one as well. Because we all know that more than two hours in this format is, is tricky. And we're still not at a space where we can bring all of us in to the same room. We can have a couple of us, but certainly not the whole group. But we are. You know, with our, our target of having a draft. Reopen plan to the board for August sixth, that really leaves us in a space of looking for something perhaps next week. I don't know if this evening time is still the best or if you would like to look at, like I suggested, maybe a split session. I do think this format allows people to. In some ways, I think it allows better access for people because it is, it is recorded. And so they can, you know, watch and learn at another time.
I'm off from work next week, so I'm very flexible and could do anytime. If you want to just propose some times, I'm.
I'm open.
Pretty open.
Except for Wednesday, I'm, I'm pretty open. My preference would be to have time so that, one, we can receive feedback and two, we can provide feedback as well. I think in other occasions, we've, we've gotten very close to the end of time in receiving feedback or receiving the overview that there's been very little time for the board to give feedback.
Wednesday's bad for me too, but I'm free any other day. Thursday?
Do you like to do Thursday? Is daytime a possibility, morning?
Just don't forget, there's the WASD call at noon. So it might turn into another of those days where people like eat lunch while they listen to the WASD call.
Would you be willing to start at nine? Do you want to start at nine on the twenty-third?
Yeah. Yeah.
And.
I would actually prefer, my, my attention span on these is really challenged. I would prefer two separate sessions. I mean, it could be split, you know, during the day, but, but this is tough.
I, I would also prefer two separate sessions, either on the same day or different days.
I would be happy to work on either side of the, the WASD networking call. I don't mind eating lunch while listening to Tam talk.
Yeah.
Is the twenty-first a viable time at all to do? Perhaps the. Work on the reopen school on the twenty-first and then the work on fundamentals on the twenty-third, is that possible? Deborah?
Can you say that one more time?
The twenty-first.
Yeah.
So that's Tuesday next week.
Yeah.
We do have two directors who are scheduled to meet with me. And if they were willing to maybe give that time up, we could start at three thirty and schedule from maybe three thirty to five thirty. I don't think much more than two hours. And we could do either session on the topic, so to speak, on the twenty-first. And then we could do the, the twenty-third, perhaps in the morning for the other topic.
Yeah, that works.
The three thirty on the twenty-first.
Don, I can do it at three?
I'm looking to all of you for.
Five?
Three to five.
Deborah?
You said you were off, so I'm going for it. The twenty-first from three to five.
Yes, thank you.
Then Thursday. The twenty-third. Nine. A little later than noon and will be very cognit of scheduling a break time in there. Yeah.
I, I'd like to propose that we do the kind of COVID update and thinking about board priorities for next year first. Just in case we need extra time. Or is that, or you know, to reschedule another meeting, like an extra, extra meeting?
I agree. Do COVID on Tuesday and fundamentals on Thursday. And I, you guys might not have been able to see me, I've been nodding my head.
Yeah, because the, um, I also feel like we're close enough to finishing these new goals slash fundamentals that we can use that as a basis for thinking about priorities for next year, even though we haven't dotted every I and crossed every T. By the way, I, I need to keep working on this sentence because it's not going as smoothly as I thought it was. And so I'll, I'll share it with Donna, I guess, and. Get it out to people once I've worked on it a little bit more, okay?
It's the, the document we've been working on here, is that still in the Google Docs or is that a separate document at this point?
It is still in the Google Docs.
So if it's locked down, so we can't edit it or do anything with it, can we go in and print what we did tonight? Or should we just wait for that to be?
Oh, you should be able to go in and just print what we have, right?
And I, I would suggest if you want to make changes, if you, if you don't have a lot of experience, the best way to do it. If you are wanting to make things just for your own reference rather than.
Oh, no, I'll be there in a minute. I'm, I'm.
You make a copy of it. And then you, you have your own copy that you can do whatever you want with.
I'm sending this in the chat, everybody. Here's a draft of a, like a few sentences that gets most of those points in. But some of them I had to leave out because, because of the issue that Tam raised that like to talk about global, global awareness, for example, is, is a bar that some kids can't meet, period. Like, whereas the other things like taking risks, everybody can take a risk. Everybody can try something new, you know? Everybody can be a lifelong learner. So, so I'm kind of like applied that filter to it already of like not including. So I didn't include globally aware. And. I didn't. Include the showing an understanding of real world problems, blah, blah, blah. But I think we got rid of that already anyway.
I added underneath the heading of civically engaged and socially responsible graduates.
Yeah.
I just cut and paste that sentence, so it's captured.
Yeah, so. It needs some more work, though. Okay, great, so.
For everyone's calendar, and we'll send you the notice about the twenty-first study session starting at three to five with a topic of the work group progress towards reopening for school. And then the twenty-third, starting at nine, potentially continuation of Tuesday's work, but also work on the fundamentals.
Yeah.
All right.
Woo, thank you, everyone. That was, that was.
Can we get a motion to adjourn?
Anybody?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Excellent, we are adjourned. It is seven oh nine PM.
I appreciate everyone's patience with my technical difficulties.
No, are you kidding? It's like we got to go somewhere. Game, you know, you have blue sky and like.
Do you want to see the softball game?
Yeah, turn it around.
Right, they're, they're there.
Thank you.
All right. Great weekend.
Bye, everyone. Thanks.